Welcome, everybody. I apologize that we're running a few minutes late, but we had an executive session beforehand to discuss some personnel matters and police issues. But welcome. Thank you for coming tonight for our August public meeting. And we will kick things off with standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Virginia, would you take a roll call, please?
Yes, yes. Mayor Anderson?
He's not here, Virginia.
Thank you. Catherine Price Engelhardt?
I'm present.
Eleanor Long?
Here.
Andrew Lubin?
Here.
James Duvanet?
Here.
Ramita Murray?
Here.
Bo Ho?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Nancy Sherlock?
Here.
Our borough solicitor?
Scott Holbert on behalf of Flagrant Associates.
And Judith?
Present.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you, Virginia. Okay, we'll start off with announcements and presentations. Do we have any announcements? Any presentations? Okay, moving right on to public comment. I'll ask you to come up, say your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to talk. We start off with Reverend Tom Dingwall.
I won't need three minutes. I'm Tom Dingwall, 146 Harrison Avenue. I just want to thank you all for approving the block party, which has come up this weekend, this Saturday, and I hope you all show up to be there. We've got a lot of gifts, prizes, challenges for young and little older, meaning all ages. So it should be a fun event, and we're hoping to make this an annual event. So please come out. We'd like to see you.
Could you just tell the public what time?
It's from noon to four o'clock. It's Harrison Avenue between Baker and Coleman.
So that's near the old Italian American Club?
Right. Actually, they allowed us to use their parking lot as well, and we're using half the street.
Fantastic.
So it should be fun.
I'll see you there.
Yeah, see you.
Looks like you guys are going to have great weather for it, too.
Gary Wallace?
Good evening. Gary Wallace at 719 Crown. How are you all tonight?
Good.
Good. So tonight on the agenda, I would like to address, update two things. This fall, as part of our MEAC, we are planning on doing another successful tree planting event, and that plan has been sent for your approval. This plan includes the tree planting of a total of eight trees to be planted on the perimeter of the south end of Williamson Park. A few of the MEAC members walked the park, and we found that this would be the best place to plant the trees. We chose the perimeter of the south side, knowing that we have another meeting on the 22nd for a comprehensive plan for the use of the park and what the community would like to see. The trees on the perimeter should not affect the plan, but enhance it to bring much-needed shade and privacy to the south side. After walking with John Later, we adjusted the plan some due to needing to know where a second storm drain was located. I've also gone over to speak with the neighbor, Jody, who would be most affected by the tree planting, and she was thrilled to hear the news and is on board with the plan. Thank you, Jody. We have secured help from the community to help with the planting, and the funding will be on the MEAC, not the borough. We appreciate your consideration and approval of this plan. Also, tonight, you'll see that I would like to join our zoning hearing board as an alternate for the remainder of the term. Over the past few months, I've worked closely with the community to see how I can help to make Morrisville a desirable place to live, shop, and visit. Joining the zoning hearing board will allow me to understand how zoning works and to uphold our zoning code to ensure proper land use. I take pride in our community and look forward to continuing to help make the community better. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Horman?
Hi, good evening. Holly Horman, Plaza Boulevard. Just quickly, I watched the zoning hearing meeting last week about American apartments wanting to erect an eight-foot wall fence, whatever, around a portion of their property because of the unruly overgrowth that is on borough land between the back of the houses on Wilk and that apartment complex. I took a good look at it. It's totally out of control, and I'm just not understanding why the borough can't take care of that little strip of jungle, to put it correctly. Necessitating that apartment complex, putting up another structure just to buffer it from this overgrowth. So, you know, with public works, not doing as much MMA work right now, I don't know why somebody just can't go in there with a brush hog and just knock it all down. So just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, I usually do not respond to anything that's notated at the podium as such, but I must say that there was an incorrect notation at the zoning hearing board that evening. The borough does not own any land in that area. And so when I found out, I was actually in another meeting, and I could not attend the zoning hearing, but when I found out that there was discussion regarding this, that it was said that the borough owned property in that area, we looked into this. We do not own any property in that area. So I'm working with the code department and zoning and so forth to inform the people that were at the hearing and of the accurate information. But thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Anybody else who didn't sign up? Last chance. Okay. Moving on to approval of minutes.
I have a correction.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. At the end of the meeting, it was suggested by or announced by Councilman Halal that Nancy Sherlock was on council and made a loan, which was never paid back, for the Jazz Festival. Well, quickly, Ted Parker contacted us to let us know the two facts, and I found the minutes. That happened on August 15th, 2016. Boroughs are not banks. We do not give personal loans, first of all. Second of all, in the minutes, to also be clear, Nancy Sherlock was not even on council, and she was not in the meeting, even present. Previously, the board council had voted to co-sponsor the annual Jazz Festival. It's in the minutes. And then they were, Grant wasn't too sure if it was going to come through for one of the bands, and so Ted Parker, who was vice president at the time, made the motion for us to sponsor one of the bands. It was seconded by Corinne Chronicle, and it was voted, the president at the time was Fred Kerner. It was voted and approved. A personal check was never sent to Nancy Sherlock. It's in the bill list that was voted and approved, and it went straight to the band. I'd like that noted and corrected. Thank you very much.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
I find that very rude, Councilman Price. But at any rate, the discussion that happened during that meeting was that they were waiting for a grant to come in, and the grant had not come in. And the conversation between the council people were that they would give the $500, and if the grant came in, they would not have to pay it out, that Ms. Sherlock would pay it out from the grant. So that left the impression with all the residents that, well, there was an impression that there was a loan given out, and nobody ever knew what came of it, if the Sherlock Foundation received the grant or not, and whether the borough needed to get that money back.
Actually, I want to correct you on that. I've got the minutes right here. That was not the impression. In fact, at the next committee meeting, it was, I think it was voted on for that check to be paid, and it was questioned whether the band came through or the grant had come through. And it had not. And so Fred Kerner said, "We voted and approved for this bill to be paid to the band," and it was.
That may be the case, but the conversation originally was...
Not in here in the minutes.
It was in the August, and then it was in the September minutes. There's a sentence in there saying, "We won't have to pay the $500 if the grant comes through."
Well, I looked at those and didn't find that, so...
Then you weren't looking in the right month.
Well, we'll see.
Okay, I think that's enough. Thank you for, both of you, for trying to clarify that.
Can I also add one thing for about the minutes? So there was a lot of discussion, and because we passed the ordinance regarding alcohol in the park, and I know we have it to keep the minutes short, and we normally just say discussion ensued, is it possible with the conversation with alcohol in the park that we actually add that so that there's a record of what council believes is happening with alcohol in the park?
Mr. Paul, can I comment to that?
Yeah, I've never heard anyone accuse our minutes of being too brief or skipping over something. That's a shock.
Which is what I was just going to say.
Trying to pick myself off the floor from that one.
So if we're going to, you know, make exceptions, and because everybody wants to hear what we had to say, then we have to go back to longer minutes. But what I'm going to ask first is, you mentioned something about a motion about the meeting, the minutes, but you never said the date, and then we started right in with conversation. So this is of July, the July 18th minutes?
Thank you. You're right. Before I could finish the introduction...
Sorry. Right. But I would like to say there is a correction on page seven, the last paragraph, the second line. There was a misspelling. I said the word "anemis," and it was, I guess it was a made-up word put in there, "heminis" or something like that. So I'd like that, I sent that to the borough manager.
You're forecommeunicated for our secretaries, I guess. Thank you.
So I did let Judith know, but I think it came too late.
Right.
But are you still, need a first and a second? I'll first that.
Are we going to add about the alcohol discussion or not?
I'm not inclined to, I'm inclined to fix any mistakes that we have in the minutes. I'm not, and since I'd been the primary proponent for the last two years of trying to have, you know, more condensed versions of the minutes, no, I'm not inclined. If you have any questions, if we want to reiterate any of those points, we can discuss all those issues tonight, but no, I don't want to change the minutes. I don't think that's necessarily it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay?
I understand that to keep the brevity, because it can go on, but I actually missed this, I missed what was said. I went back and I watched the meeting. A resident had pointed out, during that alcohol discussion, there was a comment, we were going back and forth over the rules, that, I don't know if it was Catherine Price Engelhardt or Nancy, that said, "We can do whatever we want. We're council." And if we're allowed to bend the rules up here and do whatever we want, that's a slap in the face to the citizens that have to play by the same rules.
Well, in fact, we didn't do that.
Correct.
And I've told a few of you that if we want to talk about this issue, that I'd be happy to try to illuminate or at least recall and try to give you an explanation as to what happened. Because we did, there was a lot of talk going back and forth pretty quickly, and, you know, with advice of borough solicitor, we realized that in the ordinance, which requires a 60-day filing period, that you have to have a completed application for the sponsor of the event, which includes the vendors who want to sell alcohol pursuant to the ordinance, that you have to have the completed application in 60 days before the event. Problem is that, you know, we had just passed the ordinance, and then we had several more events already approved, whether or not there would be alcohol. Those events were going to go on, and they tried to file applications for at least a couple of those to provide for alcohol. The problem is that we were now within the 60-day period. And since we had just adopted this ordinance, I think, I speak for the majority of the council, we didn't want to already start bending those rules. But, you know, and Ms. Sherlock suggested, well, you know, we're the council, we should be able to waive that requirement. And I don't think that's illogical, but Mr. Holbert pointed out that, no, actually, the ordinance does not provide for any possibility of waiver by council. We might have drafted it that way, but we didn't. So we're kind of stuck with the way that we drafted it. And, you know, and I explained that to Ms. Sherlock, and she accepted the explanation, you know, and it's kind of a harsh application of ordinance, but to me, it's important that we played, we go by the book, for exactly the reason you're talking about, Scott. The council can't do whatever it wants. We're still bound by our own rules, by the ordinances. We have to apply them fairly and impartially. And in this instance, just the way that the timing worked out, we were within a 60-day period, and so unfortunately, there's no way around it.
Whether it's 10 days, 15 days, 20 days, if Joe Public and Jane Public have to adhere to it, and we can bend the rules, that's an authoritarian attitude.
And in fact, we're not bending the rules.
Can't do that.
So there you go. And I appreciate everyone's cooperation, and I know that this is, you know, kind of tough love, but I think that it's important that we set an example and that we, especially if we're drafting new ordinances, to turn right around and ignore some of those requirements, you know, it seemed to be disingenuous, so.
Mr. Paul?
Here we are. Yes, yes.
If I could make a brief statement?
Yes.
It was me that said that we're council, and since we made the ordinance, we should be able to retain or change or waive. I would never expect it to be just a blatant waiver without, we would have, if, since it's an ordinance, we would have had to advertise that we were doing that. So I understand the rules. I'm not asking to break them, but at the same time, I think we need to either look at that again or be somewhat flexible, because it was such, it was only passed on June 20th, which gave almost no opportunity for the other events to even take place to have this alcohol. So there will be no alcohol this summer, and we're still going to have events. That's not the purpose of the ordinance, was not just to have alcohol, to have events.
Then I think we should bring this up at the next ordinance committee, consider amending the ordinance, you know, and provide for the possibility of overriding it with a vote of council.
We acquiesced to the 60 days because our borough manager thought that that's what she needed, the timeframe, and we didn't know. It was new.
You know, I was chairing that committee, and, you know, the consensus was the 60 days, which was, which was not something that we made up. We borrowed it from other municipalities, and there was a range from 45 to 60. And we, the borough manager and I both advocated 60, thinking that it was conservative, and we discussed it, but everyone agreed to it. We thought that it was reasonable. So it's not, we didn't necessarily ramrod that through, but, yeah, but...
We discussed it.
And we discussed it, and we can discuss modifying it going forward.
Thank you.
Okay? I think that's enough of that issue, but thank you all for indulging us, because it's created a lot of hard feelings up here.
We do have a motion to approve the minutes. We need a second.
Second to that motion.
Ms. Sherlock.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With that correction, correct?
Corrected, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to finance, we have, everyone has the bill list, everyone at council. Could we get a motion to approve the bill list?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No, opposed. Abstentions. Thank you.
Just, I would like to let the public know that this month's bill list was $236,623.
So check your lottery ticket. Thank you, Ms. Sherlock. Reports, mayor's report. Our mayor is not here tonight, so I assume we have no mayor's report.
I have no mayor's report.
Okay. Police chief's report. I don't see the police chief. Do we have, so we have no police chief?
You have his information in your packet this evening. It was provided this evening regarding the stats.
Right.
But I have nothing other than that.
Okay. The manager's report. Ms. Manager.
Thank you, Council President. As you see, we still talk about the Bridge Street project that we've been working on diligently. You all see the traffic pattern changes on Bridge Street currently, and we're moving along quite well. So we're hoping for a ribbon-cutting ceremony, ceremony possibly in November, December, if the timing goes correctly. So I was hoping to reach out to the Marshall group that's sitting in the audience this evening, that would like to plant some trees, and ask them if they'd be so kindly to help have a ribbon-cutting ceremony, if that's something that council would be in approving of. So I thought it would be something nice if we all work together for something of that nature and celebrate the proud moments that we have here in Morrisville Borough. So we could talk more about that. Thank you. We did, we did have a discussion regarding the tree planting, and John Later did go out and meet with Mr. Wallace. We do have some issues, we do have some issues with some of the storm drains and so forth. So that is why I asked for the final plan to be something that John and I do approve. And we are also asking for a waiting period, if possible, because we do have our meeting, which I wanted to note to everyone on the 22nd, August 22nd, at 7:00 PM here in Borough Hall, right here in this room, to discuss and review and provide any information as to what you would like to see in Williamson Park. So that's taking place again, August 22nd, at 7:00 PM here in this meeting. So we'd like to also regroup with the tree planting with that information and the plan that we're going to utilize, too. So I'm sure we can all work together on those items. But again, all positive items. We also have our 2022, 2023 roadway project that will be paving Hillcrest Avenue from Barnsley Avenue to Stockham Avenue and North Lafayette Avenue from Hillcrest Ave. and Clamor Ave., total project of $215,685.96. You'll see construction starting very soon. We'll also see some construction taking place with our roof project shortly. We just completed the sewer project, and hopefully, if all goes well, we'll be working on the electrical plans shortly also. That is all I have this evening. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, borough manager.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So the streets down in the first ward have been torn up because PICO has been down there, and, I mean, really torn up, and it's not just one street, it's multiple streets. And I know they're going to come back and fix it, and they normally just pave half of it. Is there a way that we can talk with them to see if they can pay the whole street and that we would pick up the other half of the cost if the cost is reasonable?
We can discuss it, we can discuss it with them. We could certainly discuss it with them, but anything that we pay for with liquid fuels, we have to fully put out the bid, advertise, go through all the motions, as if, just as we did with the street program for 2023. So it's an extensive plan. We would have to organize when they're doing their paving. We'd have to make sure that they could do it with the time period that we would, it would take us to put our project out to bid and so forth. And we have to get it approved also with the PennDOT representative, because we're utilizing liquid fuels. It's not that we can't do it. It's something we would need to look into to see if...
Right. I'm just trying to get a cost that would be, that would be associated, and if they would do it, actually. Because if the cost is minimal, maybe we don't even use liquid fuels, and we would get five streets paved for a very small price.
Mr. Paul?
We could look into it.
Yes, Ms. Sherlock.
Yeah, I'm just asking to look into it.
I can appreciate the work that's being done in the first ward, but there's also work in the fourth ward as well, and the second ward, and a piece of the third ward in Jefferson, where, again, they're only doing the section that they're doing. So it's borough-wide, so I wouldn't know how to, unless we pick a couple streets in each.
Well, then, council would need to discuss what you'd like me to do, if you would like me to speak with PICO in reference to this, or if not, I think that we need to finish what we started with the road project we have going on and then reassess if...
The streets in the first ward are small, so, and not only smaller, but shorter in length, so if we could just get an estimate cost for that. And the first ward has not had their streets repaved, any of them, for years, while the second ward, the third ward, and the fourth ward continue to have improvements done. And the first ward is entitled to just as many improvements as the other wards.
Sorry, but that's not correct.
So Council President?
I'm sorry, it is. I'm not playing tennis anymore, but we could disagree. Thank you. You'd love to have that last word.
I'm sorry, so we need to vote on this now?
If certain council people do not want me to do this, I need to know what the consensus is.
Judith? And President Paul?
Yes.
We do have money in our budget because of the EIT, and one of the things that people complain in this town the most is our street conditions throughout the borough. It's not just one area. I do have to say that PICO's come through the last week and kind of redid my road, my street after they had done it last, and so they are trying to make it a little bit better. But it might be worth our time to get an estimate on if we could work with PICO and get some of our streets throughout the borough repaired and fixed. I think that would make the residents really nice, happy to see their EIT money going to this kind of cause. But that's just my opinion.
So are you saying you're in favor of what Ms. Halal is asking for?
Yes, but throughout the...
Well, I would not be able to do throughout the entire borough. We have to stick to our project that we're doing.
Okay.
We can certainly eventually venture into some of these areas, but again, we need to stick to what we're doing.
I agree with you, but I think it would be worth it, maybe, looking at a plan in the future.
To get estimates, we would need to have our engineers go out into the field and do fieldwork, so it would cost us money to do this, and we would have to have a plan. We shouldn't just be going out there randomly and, you know what I'm saying? But in the future, it's something to talk about.
So we don't need to take action tonight? You can do this with your...
Yeah, my recommendation here, you don't really need to take action on this. I would have, you know, the best, the manager can talk with, our borough engineer, talk with PICO. I just know from experience that utilities tend not to be willing to do that. Maybe PICO, I've never worked with PICO on this type of issue. I just know PP&amp;L would never do it when I was in Allen. never do it when I was in Allen Town. So it might just be something that, just put a feel out to see if they'd be even willing to do it before you even talk about which streets and getting an estimate and what the better engineer can provide. I would say the easiest thing is just talk to PICO, see if that's something they'd be willing to do.
Mr. Paul?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
May I suggest that, not that I want to put more burden on our Public Works, but I think internally, John Later would be able to give us the length of the streets, the particular streets, and even some, I know he's not the engineer, so that part is not on him. But at least the length of the streets and how much that would cost to do those streets, I think it could be done before we call the engineer in. But I don't know. I mean, I know John knows the length of the streets.
But we don't know what calculations would be for.
For costs.
Some, some streets need full depth reclamation. Some streets do not need that. Streets are an animal of their own, so we really need to have more information. We can't just say, oh, maybe we could put a base coat on top of this for, you know, just by measuring. We really need, some streets really need more than what we're talking about this evening.
But we still need to know lengths of streets.
Certainly.
I just think that that, it's not a bad start and it doesn't cost us anything.
Sure. So John, researching the lengths would be fine, but we would still need our engineer to tell us what the.
Eventually.
What we would need.
But again, I would say that it has to be borough-wide, so.
And what we want to do in the future is we want to come up with a five-year plan to go around the municipality and look at some of the streets in each ward as to what are the worst streets in the borough and come up with a five-year plan and outline these streets with the engineer, with John Later. That's something that we want to do in the future and should be done.
John Later, what do you have to say about all that?
The measurements of the streets, it's not, I can do it, simple. The engineers can do it just as simple. It's just a, there's a map that has it, all the lengths on it from the county. So it's not, it's not a cost that's gonna, it's not gonna add to the cost, in other words. Engineers are gonna look at it the same as if I hand them a piece of paper and say, it's a quarter of a mile, or it's an eighth of a mile, or whatever it may be. So, just letting you know that. Obviously, I can do it, but manager's correct. There's base repair, there's all kinds of things. It's just not doing an overlay. It's just not an overlay. It's not, it's not that simple. And that's what PICO's kind of doing. They're doing just an overlay. Really not truly, I mean, it'll be a nice paved street, but as you start to use it, it starts to be hard going over it. It's gonna break up, it's gonna do all the things. So it's truly not a true paving project.
Well, they're not milling.
Right, they're not. Well, but they do, they do mill, they do mill.
They do.
But they don't do base repair, they don't do any of that on there. So it's just, they fix what they did, that's their base repair. Whatever the hole they did, they'll tamp it, they'll make sure it's compact, but then it's the rest around it, you know, outside of that hole, the other 15 feet or 20 feet, whatever it might be, 15 feet, they're not gonna repair that. So it's kind of, you know, I mean, the idea is great, but PICO came in and kind of hit us, I told you that before. They came in and said, oh, these are all the streets we're doing, and they gave us no time to repair or do any work on it. Hillcrest was done with, working with the MMA, PICO, all those things. But that was two or three years ahead of time. We didn't just go ahead and do it.
You know, John, also that Coleman, at the end of Coleman, that's an MMA water repair that, in that street where the townhomes are. Can you look into that to see, like, if the MMA is going to fix those or what the status of that is? Because that floods every time it rains, as I listen to the rain.
At the end of Coleman.
At the end of Coleman, no, where the townhomes are.
Townhomes, right, okay. Yeah, absolutely. We could talk to that.
And the residents have been telling me, like, it's a nightmare, like the potholes that are there.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
And I see that Chief McClay has joined us. Chief, would you like to give a police chief's report?
Hey, good evening. Our National Night Out, a good success, despite the storms that hampered the event a little bit.
Can you speak up a little into the mic?
The National Night Out was a good success. The storms hampered our start of the event, but it was still very good. I'd like to thank the major sponsors, which was the Britain Industries and Parks Casino. I'd like to thank all the volunteers who made the event possible. Zachary Mayhem from the Solid Rock U Center, Tom Wostowski, and the folks from Imagine Morrisville, the volunteers from the Rotary Club, the businesses who gave pizza away for free, Dick's Pizza, Anthony's Pizza. Without them, that event could not go on. Next year's event will be held again the last week of July, which is July 30th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. So for the people who said that they weren't notified, they're being notified a year in advance.
So why, can I interrupt? Why are we doing it the last week of July instead of the first week of August?
Try to find things, like that bouncy house, the, all those things are just not there. The helicopter, you want to get that. So it gives everybody, what's the difference between one week and another week? It just made so much more sense. We were able to get the stuff and put on a good show. That helicopter would never have been here. So, actually, even the guys from Capitol Health, if that would have been the following week, they had seven places they had to be at. So you're just gonna lose so many other people. National Drug Takeback will be held again at the Police Department on October 28th, 10:00 to 2:00 p.m., but we still have a standalone box downstairs that is open when the Borough Building is open. Crime in the Borough. Please lock your car doors at nighttime. Remove your keys. Remove your key fobs from your car. I can tell you that 80% of our car thefts are because people don't lock their doors. And that's just not our citizens. That's down the shore, that's everywhere. People just leave their key fobs in for some reason. On July 10th, Marshall Police, along with the Bus County Drug Task Force, conducted an investigation at the 200 block of South Washington Avenue to investigate weapons and sale narcotics. I had the South Central SWAT team commit an early morning search warrant at the property. We seized items that were able to charge the male that lived there. It was a very good operation that was going on probably for the last six months. So I hope everybody, I sent a memo to the mayor about that. Hopefully, everybody did get that.
Yes, thank you.
First week of August, August 3rd, cigarette store at the Uniblock of South Delmore was rather pointed gun at approximately 8:30 in the morning. I can't give you any information, as of this point, it's all very confidential, but I am confident by the time we meet again, we'll have a lot of progress. Vehicles. We have two out of three of the vehicles in. The third vehicle will be here probably in a couple of weeks. We decided to take the license plate reader from one of the older vehicles and put it on the new car, which had to back everything up because they had to get a different box to put everything in. But after that, you will not have to buy another police vehicle for years to come, except you're gonna need a chief's vehicle. Whether I'm here or somebody else, the chief is here, you're gonna need another chief's vehicle. That is hitting 100,000 miles as of this point. You can trade that vehicle in that's out there now, probably get $10,000. We have two cars out there right now that we're probably gonna get about $11,000 for. So we'll be able to put something back into the coffers to help you with that. I was offered already $11,000 for those two cars, but we had to do it by the rules, which the Borough Manager is handling by advertising and going through a bid process. It slows things down, but I understand it's the illegal way to do it. And last, we have a crossing guard meeting tomorrow. We are fully staffed for all the crossings this year. But if anybody's ever interested, we're always looking for subs throughout the year. My staff is a little older and they tend to get sick and not work when it gets 20 degrees out. So if anybody ever is looking for a nice part-time job to deal with the kids, we're always looking for them. But right now, we're fully staffed. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, real quick, what year is that chief car? You know, off the top of your head?
It's three years old, three or four years old.
2020, I guess?
Probably more like a 2019.
Okay.
And it has 100,000 miles on it?
Yes. Actually, 92,000 as of now. By the end of the year, you'll be there.
Thank you. Committee reports. Who wants to go first?
I'd say I don't have a committee report, but we did have our first Community Choice Aggregation meeting this past, last Monday of last month. And I, it was very productive and we were able to establish at least the goal of the committee, which is to determine if Community Choice Aggregation is not only right for the borough, but also a valuable thing to do both environmentally and fiscally. I, beyond that, it was productive. I look forward to further meetings and hopefully we can do something beneficial to the entire town, or not. You know, we'll see. We're trying, we're still gathering information, but it's going in a good direction at this point.
Thank you.
If I may, I just wanted to say I did receive your email. We would like to advertise for some future meetings for the CCA if council's in agreement with that. Thank you.
Catherine?
Our July Parks and Recreation Meeting was canceled because it was the same night as National Night Out. And we, a lot of the people who regularly attend the meeting wanted to support our police and our community and attend National Night Out. So I don't have a report from that. But I want to reiterate what Judith has said about next Tuesday and our public meeting here to discuss what we'd like to see at more, at our Williamson Park. And our Save the Williamson Park Committee has sent out and given surveys just to get a larger picture and input from people who might not be able to attend the meeting. So we'll be gathering that information. We'll have, what's her name, Judy from Gilmore, that'll be conducting the meeting, and she'll be organizing it. And so we'll be in different groups and be able to discuss the different things that we'd like to see coming forth for the future, active in Williamson Park. I just want to make it clear, this is not a meeting whether we're keeping or having a Williamson Park. We have a Williamson Park. Now we want to see with the community the different things that they'd like to have in the park. And to do that, we need to have a plan so that we can write grants to help fund the different projects or buildings or whatever things we want in the park. So I don't want people to come and get confused that, oh, are we, are we getting ready? No, that's, that's gone. We're here, the park's to stay, and this is a community meeting, I hope, with a lot of positive input. And thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, Ms. Sherlock.
I want to mention the Joint School Board Council meeting. I see that we, what was delivered in the packet was not the, there was a correction that was sent out because the public member was Stephanie Schmidt, not Sarah Stern. So I just want to make that correction for those who may have read the minutes. Most of what was talked about was the, regarding the sale of Manor Park. It's not finalized yet, but because they had done an updated agreement, but it's still in play. Damon had asked that the Borough, John Later slash chief, would test the school lights, that we have the crosswalks painted. The light at Trinity is still a bit of a problem. I know it's older, but it was on a lot this summer. So the confusion was they're afraid that people don't know when it will be on or off. And regarding the painting, the plywood of the former Capital View School, there is a plan being worked on, and they're trying to do it in stages, and they also want to include the students. So it's not happening right now, of course, it's summer, but they'll get to it as soon as they can. I would ask the question about the bridge over North Pennsylvania Avenue. That came up, and I know I sent something to our Borough Manager and she said, actually, maybe John too as well. We're told that maybe, you know, 2025. I'm just wondering if there's any way, other than contacting our senator, to find out if they can move that up a bit. I mean, it's just been way too long, and it does have a gap, which is what the steel plate is over. And I wanted people to know, this is not a sidewalk project, this is an entire bridge project. The undercarriage of the bridge needs to be, the whole thing needs to be replaced. So for those who think we just were negligent and just didn't do the sidewalk, it's an entire bridge project, which will cause some rerouting of pedestrians as well as cars.
Nancy, if I may interrupt, we have petitioned legislators to help us move that project up. We've even had meetings and we've tried to petition PennDOT and so forth. So if anyone on council or anyone in the public would like.
Well, that's what I'm hoping, maybe some pressure from the public.
Write to our legislators. It would be a welcoming chore to have anyone do that. Please, reach out to them, you know, just talk about what you see out there because, you know, it looks like a dangerous situation, et cetera. But we appreciate any help that we can get too. So we are working diligently to get it moved up, but we're, we have not been successful at this time. So any help would be greatly appreciated from council, the public, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. And one last.
It's reprehensible that we have to wait two more years with that condition and the safety threat. It's astounding.
And inconvenience as well.
It's sounding right in the center of town. It's really horrible.
The only good thing about it right now was because of the construction that was on Trenton Avenue as well as Bridge Street, people rerouting, and so this would have been the third project at the same time.
Right.
But, oh, the one last thing they were asking, well, they, I say, was the ADA curbs at West Palmer and Gramview are not, they're older ones. And it's, if it's any time we decide, or not decide, if we have any money to replace those two, it would be helpful. Because right now, strollers and parents are, have to go into the street to get around that corner, and it's a very busy school corner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul, we will be having a Finance Committee meeting in August. The public is invited, of course. We'll have an agenda. Meeting will be here in August. Judith, do you remember offhand what the August date is? End of the month. It'll be on the website. So we'll see you then.
Thank you, Mr. Lubin. Any other committee report?
One, one more, Civil Service. Real quick on that bridge. I spoke to one of the guys that were down there. I don't know what he does. He works for PennDOT, and he didn't seem too enthusiastic about.
I'm Pennsylvania, yeah.
So that bridge will be a little bit longer until it's repaired. Okay, Civil Service. We, we had a Civil Service meeting last night. Our Chair of the Civil Service Commission is back there, Ms. Bart Bauer. We certified a young man. I know Chief McClay is ecstatic to hear this. William McDonald, we're gonna vote on him later this evening. So pending our vote, which I'm gonna vote yes for this, I believe we should, we will have a new full-time police officer later on this evening. And that was it for Civil Service. That was a quick, easy meeting.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, moving on to the action items. 8A. Calling for a motion to approve planting of trees at Williamson Park, subject to approval of planting plan by the Public Works Superintendent and Borough Manager.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So I don't have a problem with the trees being planted in the park. There's no issues. Don't worry about that. But I would just recommend that they first have that meeting in August where they're talking about Williamson Park and what they want in there before trees are planted. So if there's any way that we could wait, because if they decide they want to do something, all suddenly there's trees in the way.
The trees would not be, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, you mean to jump in. Trees usually are not planted until late fall. So I think last year we planted those trees the first of November, wasn't it? Yeah, beginning of November, so it would be several months later, because that's the healthiest and safest time to plant trees.
In any case, they need to get the plan approved by the Borough Manager and the Public Works Superintendent.
Okay, so we, can we put it pending the outcome of the August? Okay, so can we put it pending the outcome of the August?
We'll just put, we'll put it the way, we'll keep it the way it is.
Mr. Paul, can I just add that this is through the tree vitalize program so it's not costing the borough? It's exactly like the one they did in the fall last year.
Fantastic. Very good. So we have the motions on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8B. Call for a motion to contract with Quiver Farm Projects, Inc. for a traveling zoo for the Oktoberfest event on Saturday, October 7th, 2023, in the amount of $795. Discussion. All in favor?
I have something. So we approved the Oktoberfest event and it was going to be a borough-sponsored event. And now we're spending $795 of resident dollars, of resident money to have a traveling zoo. Why is there not a more cohesive plan given to council so that we know the entire cost for an event prior to approving an event? Because now we have all these like little expenses that are coming in and what is the total cost of the Oktoberfest going to be?
May I respond?
Please.
We're given a total budget of $5,000. And so it is my responsibility to make sure that whatever events we have, we stay within that $500 or $5,000 that you all approved and voted on. Things come up that we'll get an opportunity to, and I do have a budget, which stays below the $5,000 that I have been given by all of you to spend for these events.
Well, that's not necessarily true. $5,000 was put in the budget for events. It doesn't mean that that $5,000 belongs to the rec committee. So if I wanted to do an event somewhere, I could come to the
That's why they've come in there asking for a specific authorization. I would take a completely different tact on this, actually. To me, this is an incident that shows that we really should consider authorizing our Borough Manager to be able to make these decisions and be able to sign for incidental expenses, say up to a figure like $5,000 or $10,000. I think that's the way most municipalities operate. That's certainly the way a lot of not-for-profits that I'm on board with operate. So we wouldn't have to bring every item like this. Tonight's not the night to talk about it, but we can, the way we proceeded is we want to approve every single item and that's fine. That's what we're doing now. But I think for just expedience sake and, you know, for more efficient functioning, that we should consider, you know, whether we could authorize the Borough Manager for some sort of plenary authority to be able to, so that we don't have to come for every incidental expense related to any borough event.
I agree with that, Council President, but a lot of these municipalities that you're referring to that do that are flush with cash. The taxpayers in this town are, have
Perfectly valid.
Been squeezed dry. So, you know, the traveling zoo here for one day, like for having a budget for the park, I mean, $5,000, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 if we bought a bench, if we bought a table, but this is, this is like $795. It's going to evaporate in one day. And on October 10th or whenever the day after the Oktoberfest, we're not going to have anything to show for it. And for that, that right there is, like, this is something we would not have done last year, the year before, the year before that.
We did, actually.
We passed the EIT, so we have a little bit more money right now. But you look at this traveling zoo here and that is the total EIT from one resident that makes $79,500 income in a year. That is their portion of what they pay in the EIT goes to the traveling zoo. So I get the park budget. I get, you know, but this is going to evaporate where it's like, well, I have nothing to show for it except some pictures on Facebook and, you know, 10 or 15 people standing around the zoo.
All legitimate points, Mr. Robinson. I will point, and I know that you often will look at these additional expenses in terms of EIT and that's a fair way to look at it. However, I think when we adopted the EIT, we weren't really doing it just so that we'd have a slush fund to be able to pay for some incidental expenses. We had a serious shortfall in the budget. And, you know, exactly, but I don't, the EIT discussion is kind of separated and apart, I think, from where we're talking about $795. Now, we have it on here so that those of you who think that's too much money for a petting zoo or that you don't want a petting zoo, you can vote against it. Simple as that. But, I mean, I don't think it's, you need to assess it in terms of where the EIT is and what the EIT allows us to do. I do take your point, though, about being mindful of how strapped we are as a municipality in granting any kind of broader authority.
The residents in this borough were angry about the taxes and how high the taxes were. And I get the school taxes are high. We can't do anything about that. But the residents were angry with the high taxes. And then we thought, and I'm going to use that word again, or that abbreviation, EIT. There's people in this borough that their roads, the 200 block of Osborne is like a roller coaster. They call it the Quarter Cup of Coffee Road because when they go out in the morning with a full cup of coffee, when they get to the other end of it, and it's only one block, they end up with a quarter cup of coffee. I don't think they would go as far as coming and setting my house on fire for spending $800 on a traveling zoo, but I don't think they'd be happy, especially if they, you know, if they're watching now and they go out tomorrow morning and they spill coffee on them again, like they've been doing for years.
Sure. But in all fairness, I don't think we're, we don't have a proposal on the table to either pave the Osborne or have the petting zoo. They're not mutually exclusive.
I realize that. And residents don't, they don't understand that it's, you can't just come out tomorrow and pave a road. They want the road paved tomorrow. They, you know, I mean, I want
I can empathize with them, absolutely.
Can I say something here? Last year, my budget was $10,500. I didn't spend, I only spent about $500 on all the events. I was glad to cut my budget and stay within that budget. But Scott, people in this town want to have events in the park. I know you don't agree with it and that's fine. That's your personal opinion. But I've gotten the bands donated. I've gotten so many things and I'm staying within that $5,000 budget as respect. But people in this town want events.
You had one of the hottest bands in the Delaware Valley play in that park, the Seven Band. I've seen them play in AC. I've seen them in Coopers. I've seen them in Levittown. How many people did you have in the park that day to see one of the hottest bands? You were lucky if you had 60 people there. Where are all these people that want to come to the park?
There were more than 60 people there and it just happened to be the hottest day in history there. Plus, we had a huge downpour, but that's beside
I was at a Phillies game that day. It was packed. The Bucks County Blues Festival was packed. The heat didn't bother them. There was no more than 60, 70 people at that event. If there's not literally going on, this is another thing. Everybody wants to be in the park. There's more geese in that park than there are people every single day.
Mr. Robinson, I was there that day and they were, the band was great. So you're complaining because the band was too good? I mean, come on.
No, I'm complaining that we had such a good band that normally they draw, they draw hundreds at Coopers, they draw thousands in AC and they drew 60 here.
Hey, Catherine, what have you spent on this show so far?
For the entire summer, I've spent $49.
What do you expect to spend on Oktoberfest total?
Probably about maybe $1,200 with balloon bounce houses and stuff like that.
Okay, so with $1,200, $1,250, that's it? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if I may, if there are other things, we should talk about that tonight, then.
The bounce house.
The bounce house, which is what, $400?
It's $250.
The bounce house for $250.
It's $250 for September and $250 for October.
Sure. So could you please bring that up so we can have
Take that motion as well, but we're on this other motion first, right?
To bring it up with this.
We have an existing motion. We have to deal with this one first.
Right.
Yeah, so the thing is that so far out of that budget item, half of it's been spent and that's only through June. So you're talking about $2,500 for three more events.
We've spent $49 total.
I have the budget here and $2,500 has been put into that account. You have 50% left. It's in the budget, the financials.
Then I don't know where that $2,500 is from.
We've had events, you've had the Seven Band, you've had
They didn't pay for the Seven Band.
Well, the EDC paid for it, correct? Which is still the residents.
It's not, it's not our budget.
I understand that, but it's not free.
It's not, it's not residents' money. They're a separate entity. They have their own bank account. Can we call for the vote for this and then move on?
Yeah, I'm ready to vote. Should we do this by roll call or? What do you think?
I think roll call.
Virginia, you there? You still with us?
Yes, I am.
Let's do a roll call for this vote for the traveling zoo, $795.
Yes. Mr. Lubin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawwell? Mr. Robinson?
No.
Of course.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray? Mr. Renan? Mrs. Sherlock? Ms. Dingleworth? Six ayes, two noes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you.
Remember, you want to add these other expenses now?
Yes, I would like to ask the Parks and Recreation Committee if they're interested in other expenses to be expended, to please request that.
Yes, we have a balloon house, a bouncy house. I don't want to call it a balloon house. Bouncy house for what, $250?
That's correct. It would be 8H, is that correct?
Yes.
A motion to approve $250 for the September event and $250 for the October event to the Lee's Family Bouncy House. I mean, we can add or subtract from that motion, but that's what it would be.
And is there anything else? You mentioned $1,200.
Yeah, we do. The band for the Irish Festival, I believe that was $700. Are we putting this all in one or can we just list them as?
Can I ask that you hold off and maybe we just, you come up with some details for the next meeting?
I was thinking we could put it all in one and say not to exceed $1,500.
Yes. Why don't we do that?
So so far, based on what you've said, the Oktoberfest is up to $1,750.
No, it's $1,045.
You have $800 for the traveling zoo. You have $250 for the bouncy house and you just said $700 for the band.
That's September's.
As council, I don't recall that we've approved bouncy houses in the past. Why are we doing that? Why do we have to do it this time?
We have. We've, either it's been on the application or we've had it as a whole. We've approved other things in the past. We have.
Haven't voted on it because usually when you vote on the budget, you, you just, you know, you have to stay within that budget and we submit things for it.
The $5,000 is for events. That's how it's listed. It's not the park. So mentioning benches and trees and things like that, that would come out of your actual park's budget line item. But this is a particular sub-line item that's just for events.
I'm just asking, in the past, I mean, this is just about four years now
You're right.
We've never approved this stuff individually.
We didn't, but I was
Why are we doing it? Why are we doing it now?
I believe we have. I believe we
I believe we haven't.
I believe we haven't either.
No, we didn't because we had some, we had a debacle last year because we didn't have the check ready because it hadn't really been approved by council.
Sure. So the whole thought process is, so council is in agreement to spend these funds. And when it's in disagreement like this, it's very hard to move forward with these expenditures. So even though there's money in the budget, we still need approval to spend on certain items. So if council's in agreement to allow each event to have up to, you know, a certain amount of monies to spend, that we don't have to come back and continue to do this, I think that would be more advantageous, that everyone is aware of what you're doing.
That's what we've done in the past. That's why I don't understand why we changed this.
Well, we have, we didn't, we didn't have, I didn't have anything to give to council regarding a total amount, so I don't have anything. And now we do. Nancy and Catherine have provided us with this information, so we know that we need at least $1,200. We should say, you know, not to exceed $1,500 for the rest of the events.
I don't mean to belabor the point, but in the past, we didn't get the amounts for the bouncy house or anything else. We've had, we've had petting zoos in the past. Why are we now breaking this out on top of the budget process?
I believe we have. I believe we have discussed this in prior times.
I don't think so.
I don't think that it's advantageous to nickel and dime everything. If we have a budget, if the budget is 5,000, then Catherine has to stay within that budget for the events. So I don't think it's helpful to come to council for every little expense. If she has to spend $200 for an event, if she has to spend $300 for the event, the bottom line is she knows her budget. If she exceeds her budget, then that's the problem. That's where a problem comes in at. I don't think, I don't think it's necessary for, I'm telling you what I used to do. If I gave you a budget, you had a budget. If you went over a budget, that's when my problem came in. Period. I don't want to hear it. You have a budget, you stay within that budget. So I don't want you running to me for every little thing. When you put in your invoices for payment, it's going against your budget. When you get to a certain level, I'm going to tell you, you have X amount of dollars left to spend for your events. I don't need you to come running to me for every little thing. That's just not productive. It's not. It's not productive.
So any extended
There's a plan, but bottom line is she has her meetings, they have a rec and she gives her, her reports and she tells what's going to be happening. So we know what's coming up. So we know that we're going to get invoices and we're going to get statements for certain things that she has planned. At the bottom line is when you're, when you're reconciling, you know what her event budget is.
I don't though.
And when you're, when you're applying your payments against those budget, that a budgeted amount, you're going to know what's left. And at some point in time, and when she's looking at the financial statements on a monthly basis, she's going to know that she has X amount of dollars left in her budget. I don't think it's necessary to come to council for every single little thing. It's not productive.
I agree.
And I agree with that and that's why I had asked for council to approve Borough Manager to be able to spend X amount of dollars on these funds.
We don't even need that. All we have to do is, it's already authorized through the budget process. As I understand it from our borough solicitor, and I'm sorry that my memory of history might be a little clouded, but apparently President Parker preferred doing this, the item-by-item approval. I don't understand that. I don't necessarily agree with that approach. I think Ms. Murray suggests a much more reasonable approach, much more efficient, and you're still required to stay within your budget. If you need to exceed budget, you need extra money, then we can come talk about it. But there's no reason to go through this process, you know, both at the macro level and the budget level. And then each time we sign a new contract for anything from $5 to $5,000, we've got to come talk about it and give people the opportunity to, oh, I don't like that one or I like this one. It's foolhardy. We're micromanaging that process.
We really shouldn't. I mean, that's why she has, she has a committee. The committee designs what's going to be happening. And when she, when she gives her minutes at peer for the council, we understand what's going on. And I think that's all we need. I don't think we need to go on that micro level, a micro managing level, because at the end of the day, either we trust her to do her job or we don't. Simple as that. We either, she's, either we believe that she's qualified to do, be the head of the rec committee or not. Simple as that. She's given us a report. She has a budget. She looks at the finances. She's very reliable and very conscientious. And if she needs more, if she thinks she's going to exceed, that's when it needs to come to council and says, hey, by the way, is it possible? And we're either going to say yes or no.
Plus it all goes through the Borough Manager ultimately, right? I mean, you are a keeper.
So that's what I'm asking. So, so Attorney Holbert, we have a budget in place. So as a manager, any line item in the budget, I can make a decision on spending.
Well, you would treat it like your other expenditures. For instance, they approved a bill list tonight. That expenditure that you'd be approving for the parks would go onto that bill list that would ultimately get approved, just like any other expenditure. For instance, you know, you, we get paid, we're a vendor, our, our bills go on the bill list. They don't have a separate line item, a separate action item, just for the solicitors' bills or the engineers' bills or.
But those are monthly bills that we know about. So if there's, so if there's something that someone wants to spend on.
It's a part of the budget. It's.
I understand that.
But.
We have a budget, but then why do we bring these items to council for approval? If the police department wants to purchase the guns and they have, they have a budget to spend things on? So the Borough Code does not restrict me to have to come to council for, for approval for monetary items?
You do, but that's through the bill list. You, they approve our payment, they don't approve every, they approve our payment, they approve payments out of the budget, not out of the budget, out of the coffers through what's a budgeted process in the bill list. They do approve every expenditure.
But once the bill list, it's too late. Like you've already bought it. So, so, so either we're going to default on an invoice or we're going to pay it.
Go against the bill list. If it's a, if it's a, if it's a.
I think that comes with, with Judith's expertise. And she, if she feels that there's something that's coming up, that she really thinks, like anything else that she needs to bring to the council, then she brings it to the council. That's where her expertise comes in.
And, and by the way, I don't mean to interrupt, but it's not just Judith that, that has this responsibility.
Yeah.
I, I have to co-sign this check? Either, either me or Mr. Lawal or Mr. Lubin? We have to co-sign as well as, as well as Virginia Cypher's. So, so there's that check before it even gets, the bill list that we approve reflect the checks that were signed by the authorized officers. So if I see something there that says, you know, bouncy house, $10,000, I'm going to say, wait, I'm not going to sign that check for the bouncy house. But that's, that's where the checks and balances come. It doesn't necessarily, we, we don't really gain much by, by bringing in the whole council to vote on these things because we don't really know what the detail is. And then we have these, these obtuse discussions about, you know, whether, who, who we want in the petting zoo or, or which band played, and that gets kind of crazy.
So in my prior years of service in municipalities, I've always been authorized by council, by resolution, that I have up to X amount of dollars to spend.
And maybe that's what needs to be done for the events.
In one municipality, I had $10,000 limit, one I had a $5,000 limit.
I don't think that we, that you even need that. I mean, we're signing the checks, we've got the, we've got the three signer thing, which is, which is onerous, but we've got, we've got three signatories, at least one of which is a member of, is an officer of council. And there's your check, you know, and, and meanwhile, you sign the, you, you sign those checks, we sign the checks with you. If we have a question, we can go back to whoever is requesting the check. And then if something really goes off the rails, we can bring it to council and talk about it. But otherwise, the, the daily business of the, of the borough goes.
Is automatic for the manager, should be, right? Because if you, if you sign yourself.
It doesn't matter whether it's a regular expense or whether it's an unusual one.
Right.
It's all for the same.
You just sign yourself to five, 10, $15,000 as a Borough Manager, because that way you'd be coming back all the time asking for.
Where I would say where it falls in is there is a limit, and that's when we get to things like the Borough Code. So for instance, when I was talking about myself, we are a professional service. We're exempted from public bidding requirements. We might go over those numbers. So that, I mean, that's where you look at it. The Borough Code, not your Borough Code, but the Pennsylvania Borough Code has limits on what you have to do, when you have to bid, when you do like that. Following those limits will let you know when your expenditures are. You know, something at the amount of 795 is going to fall under any sort of bidding requirement, any sort of expense. Looking at those, that's when you know, all right, so 795, we don't even need quotes.
Right.
Let's say the number's 1,000. I don't, I don't have the other numbers off the top of my head. You need three quotes, but we make sure that's done. When you start getting to those levels where you have statutory requirements, that's when you would come to council.
And, and to Carlitha's point, the, the expense with regards to this September 17th event, that was in the minutes from that particular meeting. And that's, in those minutes, it stated how much the band was going to be, how much the dancers were going to be. So there is, there is some pre-knowledge of the approximate, but I have to pull that out. I think it's 700.
Sure, and I'm, I'm fine with taking whatever process council is putting in front of me. I'm trying to work with everyone. So if that's the process we're going to utilize moving forward, I'm fine with that.
I mean, you're the expert here.
Yes.
You're running the borough, you know? I mean, just like when I was business manager, it was expected for me to, to handle the budget. I couldn't, didn't have to run to the CEO or the, or the division, or the, or the Department of Human Services. I didn't have to run to them. It was my responsibility. So it's your responsibility to make sure the budget and all the finances are handled appropriately. So we have you in that position because we believe you're qualified. So there's no need to run to us for every little thing. You know, you know, when I was with the state, there were certain requirements, certain quotes for certain things, certain levels. You have your RFPs, you have your, so you, you go through those things, you already do that.
Yeah, we do.
You already do that, so you're good. So just, just continue doing what you're doing. You don't need to, like all those little, bitty little things. We don't need to micromanage you and say, Judith, did you, that $500? No, uh, no.
No.
So, so where do we stand, Mr. Paul? Do we need to?
Well, we already, we approved the 795, so we're going to stick with that approval. We're not going to rescind that approval. But going forward, I would, in, in, in working on the agenda, as I, as I do each month with the Borough Manager, if something like this comes up on the agenda, I'm going to suggest we don't need it on the agenda.
Okay, so the, the two, the bouncy houses, we don't have to address.
If anyone on council ever has a, a specific concern about any expense they see or hear about or see on the, in the bill list, that's, that's, that seems out of whack, we can, we talk about it. We can bring it out and we can, we can hash it out then. But we're not anticipating a problem with every single one. And we're going to basically let, let business kind of operate, you know? As I say, now, it's not only, it's not only the Borough Manager, but it's, it's, it's a council member who has to co-sign those checks. And that's where, that's, that's where we can nip it in the bud if there's a problem. And if not, you know, but, but, but we can certainly come back here and argue about anything that we, we even already paid for, if it was done improperly, and we can decide whether we need some other process. But otherwise, I think we're, we've been over, overdoing this.
For the public's knowledge, can I just talk, the Oktoberfest would be 795 for the petting zoo, 250 for the bouncy house, $100 for some miscellaneous items with regards to popcorn and, and those kinds of cotton candy. So that's $1,145. And that's, and that's it. Because the band is being paid for by the MEDC. We're not paying for a band for October. That expense is being picked up, so that's $1,145. And the September event, $700 for the band, $100 for the dancers, and $100 for the duet. So that's, that's about $900 plus $100 miscellaneous. So that's $1,000. So the whole, having four events is going to cost us about $2,000 because we didn't have to pick up the bands. And I, I am curious about the 2,500 that Helen Hallal's mentioning though.
I'm, I'm looking at the budget right now. It's Special Park Activities Fund, budgeted $5,000. Current expenses is $47.40. And then the balance is $4,952.60. That's in our budget for, for special events.
So that $47 was on our bill list this evening that was approved.
That was for T-shirts, right? And so you were, you were reimbursed for T-shirts? What were the T-shirts for?
The T-shirts for, for the volunteers that were working.
The yellow ones?
Yes, so that, and we'll use them over and over for all four events.
Okay. Moving right along, let's go into action item HC. Call for a motion to advertise to sell two police vehicles with a minimum bid of $5,000 for each vehicle. Vehicle number one, number 4610, former police chief's unmarked vehicle, VIN number 1FM5K8AR6EG50204. Year 2014, make Ford. Model Explorer. Mileage 1, 108,845. Vehicle number two, number 4608, former patrol vehicle, VIN number 1FM5K8AR1FGA35413. Year 2014, Ford Explorer, 72,757 miles.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8D. Call for a motion to accept the civil service full-time officer, full-time police officer eligibility list.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8E. Call for a motion to approve Chief McClay to begin the process of Act 57 to hire a full-time police officer per Borough Council's Directive for Consideration of Employment in 2023 per Borough 2023 Budget to replace an officer that resigned.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8F. Call for a motion to provide a conditional offer of employment per Act 57 to hire full-time officer William Todd McDonald.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8G. Call for a motion to retain the services of SWR Strategies at a rate of $125 per hour.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Abstentions?
I'm sorry.
Motion carries.
Who was the motion and who was the second on that?
Andrew was one.
And Helen?
I was the second.
And, Andrew was the motion, Carlitha was the second.
Great. And I understand we need to, we're going to do a motion for the.
Just doing a.
And, and call for a motion to approve the appointment as an alternate for the remainder of six-year term to the zoning hearing board, term expiring January 8, 2024, appointment of Gary Wallace.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Congrats.
Congrats, Gary.
That was Helen and.
Did I do something wrong?
No, no. I was asking who the second was.
Carlitha, Helen and Carlitha.
Great.
Virginia, are you getting these motions? Virginia?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Have you been getting them, have you been getting the motions and the seconds?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, other business.
I have something, but I don't know, it could be under Borough Officials.
Other, yeah, other business would be for action items, so.
Yeah.
Any other, there's no other business.
Borough officials then.
Yes, I would like to, just a couple announcements. I'd like to thank Mary Herenda for her time on the, the, the environmental board over these years. She's been very much a part of the successes that the MEAC has achieved over the years. So she's resigned and I wish her well. We all wish her well.
And I second that. I really appreciate all the service that Mary has given to this municipality.
Yes, and the most recent was the, the tree planting last fall. I also might, like to mention two people from the library that are, have, well, one has already resigned, I'm sorry, retired. And that's Dawn Mellor. She was there for over 20 years, working for the library. And also Sue Neff, who will be ending her career there after just about as many years at the end of this month. So thank you to both of them for their time, many, many years at the library. And I think, I think that's all.
Mr. President Lord?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was going to bring this up in the Park and Recreation meeting and I didn't. So when I came on council, President Ted Parker asked me if I'd take over Morrisville Restaurant Week. So Corinne gave me the Facebook and I've been just promoting businesses and stuff. And so we're looking at probably the second week of, of November to have a Morrisville Restaurant Week in town.
What do you need from council?
I don't know.
Go buy a dinner?
Yeah. I don't think any things. Yeah. I, I don't think at this time I'll start having meetings with the various restaurant owners and things.
I mean, do you want us to declare it national?
Yeah.
I mean, Morrisville Restaurant Week or something like that?
Yeah.
Maybe next month.
Andrew, I, I, I'm not discounting that we shouldn't have that, but I thought the MBA was going to be doing restaurant.
Well, that's what I was going to suggest. We never quite got around to that, but maybe you want to work with the MBA because most of restaurants are our members already.
Yes, that's a great idea.
Thank you, Helen. Thank you, Nick. Thank you.
Good point.